All right, it looks as though we are good to go. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for the City of Mammell for August 3rd, 2020. Welcome to the brand-new council chambers. This is not exactly how I envisioned the first meeting in this room would go, as we have masks on and a socially-distanced audience sitting out there. But here we are. For those watching from home, we have two council members who are attending virtually. They'll be Councilmember Vapurzane and Councilmember Saunders. You may not be able to see them at all times, but I can see them on my Zoom, and you will hear them coming through the sound system or through your computer speakers as we go. So with that, I'd like to -- I'll be leading invocation and pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this new facility that we are here to do the people's business in. Lord, I pray that you grant and bless this room for years to come, that the folks that sit up here would seek to do the will of the people and will do so tactfully and respectfully. Lord, we come to you to ask for safety and a sense of calm as we go through our daily lives during an uncertain time. We pray you grant us that security and be with us. And we pray that you will, of course, always be with those who protect us, protect those who protect us, whether they're serving overseas in the armed forces or they're here locally wearing a uniform. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal rights and justice for all.
All right, I have -- there's nothing currently on the agenda for special guests and announcements, but I do have a special announcement. As of today, I have filled the position for the Director of Planning, Zoning, Code Enforcement, Buildings, and Permits, a department whose name hopefully gets amended here soon to something more manageable. But I'd like to introduce you all to a complete stranger you've never met, Mr. Scott Grummer. Scott, if you could come on up and introduce yourself to everyone and subject yourself to a stream and torrent of questions. Oh, hey, let me get your mic unmuted. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Scott Grummer, 500 Edgewood Drive. Thank you, Mayor Norris, for giving me this opportunity. I truly have enjoyed working with you as your staff assistant and as Chief of Staff this year. I've learned a lot, and you've really given me a lot of knowledge within the city. And I'd like to say thank you to Trent Carter and to my colleagues in City Hall as well as around the city, because it's been a truly great experience just working with all the staff and everyone here. So I appreciate this opportunity to be the Director over the department. Being here and working as interim planning director, I've seen a lot of things that can -- we can improve upon, and I'm looking forward to working with the department and with the city in order to try to look at some of those things, some of the challenges that we've been dealing with over the last few months, such as drainage around the city and other things, such as policies and procedures that may be some outdated and could be use some updating, as well as just the way that we work as a team and as a department to serve the needs of the people. So it may require some modifications in the department, and we'll certainly work together and move through that, but I'm truly looking forward to working with everybody. So if you have any questions for me, feel free to ask.
Thank you. Yes, that'll be a great victory for the city, but puts me, unfortunately, in the position of now having to try and fill shoes that I think have been left so that they cannot be filled very easily, but I'm sure we'll make do. With that, it's time for the approval of the minutes from the July 20th regular meeting. You all should have been provided a copy of those minutes. Is there any discussion on that? I've got a motion and a second. And let me check over here. No discussion from the councilmembers on Zoom, so far as I can see. All right, so all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries, minutes passed. Just as a reminder to speak into your microphone, which I'll probably be saying the whole way. Public comments, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments? I muted y'all on Zoom. No public comments, so that brings us to financial statement review, which is done at the second meeting of the month. So we'll move on to department reports. Ms. Vogler, the poll.
Hi there, good evening. Thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity. It's going to be a little odd to speak through this, but I know that you're all bearing through the same. I do have a PowerPoint if we were able to do click share. But I'm not sure that I have the right end for Surface Pro. So I have copies. Yeah, probably adapter.
Well, if you have copies, we'll just use that.
I have copies, I can do that, because I was a little bit nervous on that. We've had an interesting year. We started out very strong. January and February, our numbers looked great.
Ms. Vogler, if you could bring the mic down a little bit.
Oh, yes, sir. Our numbers looked great in senior services. However, beginning March 18th, we, as most all other departments, had changes. We financially were at 95% of where we were last year, from January 1st to July 31st. Unfortunately, that's not going to be 95% of what we were to bring in for the year, but we were looking -- we are doing fairly well. We've brought in $155,563,000 compared to same time of year in 2019, $163,000. So that's about 95% membership. We're at about 75% of what we were last year. We're at 1,197 members. We have lost some members and, of course, had some not renew, but all in all, I think it's pretty good, very strong. We're at 75% of what we were last year. Rides, interestingly enough, we're at 68% of our capacity. So we, year-to-date, have done 2,553 rides. What we're seeing is that we have a ridership that is dependent on the services that are provided, high-frequency same riders. We do non-emergency transportation for medical appointments and shuttle service to helping those get to the grocery stores, and we actually continued that service with our volunteers and our staff members since, well, since January 1. We've continued that service, essential rides. We've not done field trips or fun things, but we have done essential rides since January 1. Volunteers, we've taken a nosedive in our volunteers, and I totally understand why. We have many that have chosen or they have health conditions that they're not able to volunteer, but we're currently at 54% of our volunteer hours that we report. I submit a weekly report to the mayor, and we've been at about 20, between 21 and 20% for the last month and a half. So that's really taken a nosedive with our volunteers. So what that means is that we may have an admin assistant that's in the kitchen, or we may have an activity coordinator that's taking a medical ride if we don't have a volunteer or a driver to do it. So we've definitely been working hard to keep everything going. It is a -- it's exciting. There are a lot of good things that we're doing and a lot of good services that are being provided. I always kind of fear to tell those stories, because I know sometimes the numbers are more wanted at this meeting, but, you know, we have, again, we have riders, we have residents that don't have a way to get to their medical rides. We've got several that are on dialysis that don't have a way to get to dialysis that are going several times a week. Their family members, maybe we take them and their family members pick them up, but they don't have a way to, again, they don't have a way to get there or get back. So, or those that just can't get to the grocery store any other way, or the bank, or wherever it may be. So definitely what I would consider essential rights to keep people in their homes. Very exciting, when I say very exciting news, I've been working with the mayor and our city attorney to find ways that we can go back to normal, or whatever normal may be. We have up to, we started with two people in the fitness center at a time. As of today, that's up to four people. Last week, we were at 86% of capacity for the times that we had open, so it's very popular, the fitness center. We've actually moved around some equipment to try to open up some more spaces and working with the mayor to bring back our classes, beginning the first week of September. I've met with all of our instructors, and we have some that are very eager to come back, and they're willing to do whatever they can. We've got some that are wanting to wait a little bit longer, which I definitely understand. We will be following the CDC guidelines, and that may mean that classes may be smaller to socially distance. But, you know, we're following all those guidelines, everything from checking everyone in at the front desk, taking temperatures, the questionnaire from the Department of Health. We keep the list and, you know, definitely, and cleaning, 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 cleaning. So, I know it's not super exciting, but it takes all of us to make it work, so that's what we've been doing.
Thank you, Ms. Vogler. Is there any questions, comments concerned from the City Council? Councilmember Scott?
Congratulations on doing as well as you are in these hard times. I've heard of a lot of institutions that aren't doing nearly as well as what you are, so I'm proud of you for your efforts, and I'm fine with the numbers.
Thank you.
At this juncture.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mosley?
It sounds like your numbers are amazingly strong, actually. The, right now, are most of the rooms then going unused if we're not having classes and that sort of thing, except for maybe the workout room?
Well, we do have virtual classes, I forgot to mention. We do have a number of virtual classes that are going on, and so in those ways, those numbers or those rooms are being used, and we are working with the instructors to get them back in, but it's looking like in most of the rooms, it'll be six people per room to meet the CDC's guidelines and to be as safe as we can. But in the rooms that aren't being used, we don't, we keep them on occupied on our HVAC to help keep the cost of the utilities lower. We've used those, one of the rooms we used to put together some new equipment that came in that'll go back into the, what we call the fitness room. But we do have two groups of classes that run. Our yoga instructors like the smaller room, I guess for, it's just more conducive to yoga, so in that way, we are using one of the rooms, and then the other room we're using mainly for the group fitness.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Vogler.
Thank you.
The next item is the Planning Commission Report, and that would be Councilmember Vapurzane.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, great. So we did not have that much that was on the agenda. There were a couple of items for the splash pad that were on the agenda that were tabled until later. There was also some very, very interesting information about the northern end of town, and I've asked Scott Grummer if he would just take a second to share that with you. There was also a piece of property that cornered CCA at the Ville and, I believe, Mount Pilier, and I asked Mr. Grummer if he could also briefly mention what was going on with that piece of property as well. But I'm really, I can't wait for everyone to be able to see, if you haven't already, the artist renderings of the possibilities at the northern end of town. So I've asked Mr. Grummer if he would mind just taking a brief second to describe that and then about the piece of property with Country Club of Arkansas.
So we'll be giving a presentation at the next City Council meeting for the North Area Plan, and then you're saying you've asked Scott to what?
To just briefly mention about that piece of property. It was just, it just, it was talked about at the corner of the Ville and Mount Pilier, I believe it was, at the Country Club of Arkansas.
Okay, Mr. Grummer?
I believe in Councilmember Vapurzane, he's away right now, so he just wanted me to share what that specifically was. It was a lot split, I'm sorry, it was a lot merger, a residential lot where they took on a little additional land from the Country Club, so it was just a simple residential lot merger.
Who, what? So in the future, the Planning Commission Liaison reports are for the Planning Commissioner Okay, Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, just a real quick question on that Mount Pilier lot there. That lot, it basically took on a parcel that came from the Country Club of Arkansas Golf Course, is that correct?
That's correct.
Was it originally common space, and it became residential, or how did that work?
It was just part of the Country Club open space that was there, looked like a possible pathway for a golf cart pathway that they chose never to use. So there was, in the bill of assurances, they were able to allow some residential lots to take on additional land, and that was one of those.
Okay, so what was open now is part of the residential, it's all one lot now, isn't it?
Correct, that's correct.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next order of business is the, a procedural motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. I've got a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
There we go. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Again, especially when we go to the roll call, please speak into the mic so it activates your mic. The next order of business is we move on to unfinished business. First item is the third reading of Ordinance 991, adopting provisions for sick leave accrual. Have we had, before we get to that reading, there were some questions about what the form of that, what the current status of that ordinance was. Madam? There you go.
I did review the minutes from the meetings, the last, well, all of the meetings where this ordinance was read previously. We did not vote to amend the ordinance itself. We discussed amending it, but that was never voted upon, so it is still in its original form. I think the mayor wanted to go ahead and introduce 992, assuming that, and had it on the agenda, assuming that we probably would make the same amendment to 991, but that had not happened, and they were both just tabled.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah, in response to what City Attorney Krebs had mentioned, what I had noticed was that the, there's a section missing off of the ordinance that's in our packet tonight for 991. And I say missing, at our July 6 meeting, when this ordinance last came up, there was a section about adding 540 hours of sick leave so that when officers retired, they can be paid out the 540 hours. Currently, it's 480, so it was on there for our July 6 meeting, but it is back off again. And so I guess as a procedural question, where does that put us if there was an ordinance presented with improper language? I'm not sure how that would be handled.
I think that just, I had gone ahead and... I'd gone ahead and included that, drafted what I understood some councilmembers wanted to consider. I believe it was just in error that that version is what was included in July, but it was never, I don't think, it wasn't read in July. I don't believe it, because it was just tabled in July, so that version that was in the packet wasn't acted on.
Okay, so I believe we're at the point to read Ordinance 991. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plasque County, Arkansas, ordinance number 992, an ordinance of the City of Mammell, Arkansas, adopting provisions for the payment of firefighter sick leave accruals at death or retire. Sorry, that was the wrong ordinance. Okay, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plasque County, Arkansas, ordinance number 991, an ordinance of the City of Mammell, Arkansas, adopting provisions for the police officer's sick leave and for other purposes.
Got you. So we had talked about several different things, including maxing out the amount of retirement that we could do, that sick, that maxing out the amount of sick leave that we could pay out upon retirement, is that we don't currently pay the maximum amount. And we had included that, but it is now not here. It'd be my recommendation that a motion be made to amend it and add that maximum sick leave for retirement payout back into this ordinance. I've got a motion from Councilmember Williams and a second from Councilmember Tierney. Is there any discussion on that? Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, I was just wondering, does that mean it has to go back to first reading? Is that a substantial enough change?
Madam City Attorney?
I think there are a couple of questions. When you say maximum accrual, what number of hours do you refer to as maximum accrual?
Well, I was referring to the amount under state law that was the maximum. I don't have the old ordinance in front of me. Was it 540?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I assumed it to be 540, but I don't want to assume. Yeah, I believe that would be a significant enough change that it would need to go back to first reading.
Okay, and the other question I have is the opinion. Was there going to be any discussion on the opinion?
Are you, yes, ma'am, what was your question?
Okay. Well, are we in compliance with the opinion?
Are we currently, or are we, will be, we be?
Will we be, will we be in compliance with the opinion if we pass this ordinance?
I hate to, I don't know of anything that would be out of compliance. I'll just say it that way.
Okay. I did see some language in there that the city is not allowed to, you know, do something different from state law, so I just wanted to make sure that we weren't doing that.
The 540 hours is consistent with the 90 calendar days, and that's why that amount was chosen. We had previously talked about a different amount, but the 540, I believe, is what we decided to be the maximum.
Is there any way we can make that change that won't cause us to go back to first reading, or, I mean, is there a way that we can add it in later, or is this just the best way to do it?
I mean, since we are adding a different provision, I think it would make sense to go ahead and include that, something in the title referring to that increase, and it is a different substantive provision to add, so I think it would just be safer to go ahead and do the normal three readings.
Okay, and it doesn't make a substantial difference to the officers today to have this go back to first reading?
I don't think there's, I hesitate to answer for the police officers, but I don't think there's anything that they're dying to have the ordinance passed.
Okay, I just didn't want them harmed by that change.
And if anyone out there disagrees with that assessment, please let me know. Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any additional comments, discussion? All right, so we have a motion and a second to add back in, what is, add the max accrual retirement payout of 540 hours. And death into the, is there any final discussion on that? All vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Vapurzane?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, this will be back on first reading at the next City Council meeting. The next order of business is, oh, sorry.
What I was going to ask is, since this puts it back on first reading, would we want to have that first reading again tonight to have it go in conjunction with Ordinance 992, so that we're talking about them on the same night? Because Ordinance 992 is the exact same thing, it's just on the fire department side.
So the retirement accrual is on 992, but I don't know how it got moved up to 991. But I know, I know stuff happens, but the retirement accrual is on 992.
So we, she looked through, City Attorney Krebs looked through the minutes, and I did as well, and we, there's no record of a vote, and you listened to the audio and video today as well.
I listened to all of the audio today for the first and second meeting. So what happened was, we discussed in depth possibilities for amendments, but then we never, we just, I think jointly, you all decided to wait until it was on third reading to decide how you wanted it amended, or to, I believe, maybe we were going to, some people wanted to kind of approach me and talk about it in the interim, and so the assumption was that that was going to be included on third reading, and so the mayor asked me to prepare the ordinance to make the firefighter leave the same. So we went ahead and did that, and it was placed on the agenda. In the interim, a lot of things happened and that we decided to table it and get the Attorney General's opinion, so there was just never a change made. Nobody made that motion, because it was just a motion to table, and that was all we did. Yeah, it just kind of drove on.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So is that appropriate to have another reading of 991 tonight, or have a?
I think there will be a change in title along with that, so I, we might be able to wait. I don't know if we want to consider maybe waiving and, you know, doing multiple readings at the next meeting?
I'd be fine with that.
That's a possibility, but I think it would probably be better to get the amendment in writing and the title change in writing before we do. and the title change in writing before we do.
Yeah, I'd prefer to do the two next week, next time if that's possible, so, to catch up, I guess. Was that on second reading mode? Never mind. It's been a long four months.
Councilmember Mosley?
I was going to say, this whole thing's been kind of complex and been strung out over several months, so let's do it as simple as possible and just let the city attorney rewrite it and just figure it out at the next meeting.
All right, we're back to ordinance, the second reading ordinance number 992. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaske County, Arkansas, ordinance number 992, an ordinance of the City of Mammell, Arkansas, adopting provisions for the payment of firefighter sick leave accruals at death or retirement and for other purposes.
If there is no discussion, this will be on third reading at the next city council meeting. All right. The next order of business is new business, a first reading ordinance number 1,014, amending section 82-7 of the Mammell City Code. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaske, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 1014, an ordinance amending section 82-7 of the Mammell City Code to clarify those vehicles prohibited from parking on city streets and for other purposes.
All right, so I've asked the city attorney to draft this ordinance. This doesn't change the way the code has been applied and interpreted for a while, but periodically, we get folks that are upset about vehicles parking along the street. And then they go to, you know, they go do their due diligence and they pull up the city code, and the city code says you can't park a vehicle on the street, basically. But then you have to go to the definitions section to realize that it, as far as that particular code is defined, it has a special definition. It doesn't mean all vehicles in our traditional sense. It means this special definition. And so, what I've asked is the city attorney to draft it so that when someone goes to look at the code, it'll be clear to them what the provisions of the code are. So, I think that folks should continue to be able to park on the street when safe, you know, when safe and in those places. But I also don't want to give the impression that we just aren't enforcing the code and following what the code says. So, with that, if there is any discussion on that, Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, let me see if I understand this correctly. The idea is to try to keep very large trucks off the street and not being parked in the street overnight and that sort of thing, is that correct? We're talking tow trucks, we're talking things like that?
The idea of the ordinance is to clarify the way the ordinance is currently and has long been interpreted. That long interpretation that has been that you can't park very large vehicles out there. There's been debate about what constitutes, you know, that meant the three-quarters, three-quarters tons on the chassis or trailer, what that meant. Oftentimes, when people talk about a three-quarter ton truck, say they're talking about a F-250 or the Dodge 2500 or the equivalent. But maybe if you looked at the weight of cars and, so it just became really convoluted. But the way the ordinance was originally written was to keep large vehicles from park... It appears to be to have kept large vehicles from parking on the street.
Okay. And the best I can tell, too, the same vehicles are not being allowed to park on private property either in a residential area, is that correct?
Yeah, that's already in, that's, yeah, so you're looking at, in the ordinance section one, but it is subsection C of 82-7 that talks about the limitation of commercial vehicles parking on private property.
Right, so it's basically the same vehicles.
That, we're not amending that section at all.
Right.
But not necessarily, because there's a different definition for commercial vehicles than large vehicles. And you can see that up in subsection A of section one, the two different definitions.
I think I understand that now, thank you.
Is there any additional discussion on ordinance number 1014? Seeing none, this will be on second reading at the next city council meeting. Oh, wait a minute, I got to remember to look at you guys over there. Uh, Councilmember Vaprazan and Ken, if I'm ignoring you and you want to say something, please just unmute yourself and talk. I've got three screens in front of me.
I'm fine.
Thank you. Next order of business is Resolution 2020-18 regarding audit procedures. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that resolution by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaske, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, resolution number 2020-18, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an engagement letter authorizing audit services for the 2019 financial audit.
I'm going to have to remember to get your mic turned on for those. So, um... I'm sorry? Was that a motion from Councilmember Vaprazan? And a second from Councilmember Scott? Really quickly, one of the reasons, I don't think this is something that would ordinarily come to the city council, but the city council... But the city council has asked to be informed. This would extend our contract with Kraft for one year. We believe that there are certain efficiencies that we can get if we are, if we do the certain parts of the 19 audit at the same time as certain parts of the 2020 audit. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that to us. I do appreciate that. That's something that we haven't done in the past, and I appreciate you bringing that to us. And I'm in agreement with this for this one year. I would like to seriously look at trying legislative audit for the next year beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no additional discussion, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2020-18. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Next order of business is Resolution 2020-19, a resolution certifying the amounts of liens. Madam City Clerk, treasure, if you could please read that by title only now. I got your mic on.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaske, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, resolution number 2020-19, a resolution approving and certifying the amount of liens to be filed with the Plaske County Tax Collector against certain real property in the City of Mammell, Arkansas as a result of brass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuances and for other purposes.
Really quickly, we have a motion to approve from Councilmember Vaprazan. Do I hear a second to that motion? We have a second from Councilmember Gardner. With that, I want to first of all thank primarily Trent Carter. When he came in as director, was very aggressive about trying to remediate some of these nuisance lots that we were having difficulty with. And he worked with the city attorney who also deserves accolades on this in getting this so that when we have those particularly troublesome lots that just maybe no one lives there, or it's difficult to even find out who owns it, that the city can hire someone to go out, we are hiring someone now, is that right? Yeah. To go out, and then we pass that bill on via lien that has to be approved by y'all to the homeowners eventually. Is there any discussion on the motion and second to adopt Resolution 2020-19? Don't wait. There you go. If you hit your button, I didn't see it. Okay, there we go. Councilmember Scott?
So, this will not mean additional cost to the city if it gets passed along?
Correct. This will be the way for us to recoup the expenses that the city has already paid to abate the nuisances.
Okay, thank you.
And in theory, if we're able to collect on all those liens, it'll be a completely revenue-neutral deal. All those in favor to adopt Resolution 2020-19, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. The next order of business is Resolution 2020-20, a fun number. This is not being brought to y'all to read tonight, but it is being brought because it'll probably be followed at the next meeting with a request for approval to purchase the fire apparatus. You may recall, a number of months ago, we had a resolution and ultimately a motion that was voted on to have the fire department, to authorize me to have the fire department spec out a new truck backing up to the last budget session, actually for years. It was planned and that we thought we would be budgeting in this year for the entire purchase of the fire apparatus. During budget session, we came up with the idea to pay for half of it this year, set aside some of that money into the capital improvement fund in the amount of $310,000, and then to purchase it next year. Y'all may recall, we talked about that the vehicle was going, the current apparatus that this one would be replacing was deteriorating at a rate that was not, that was faster than we anticipated. And as a result, we were spending more money on repairs that we had anticipated. So, the idea is that the next city council meeting, we'll come back and ask for the city council to authorize us to purchase that truck. We would pay half down now and then half when we got the vehicle. That half down, which is the half we set aside already, comes to just under $310,000. So, with that, I will open, did I properly explain that, Ms. Mathis and Chief Ezeo? So, with that, this is kind of an introduction so that we don't come to you suddenly and ask for a large purchase at the last minute. Councilmember Williams?
How long will it take? I mean, if we pay down now, when will the rest of it be? How long does it take to spec out a truck?
Chief Ezeo, could you come answer that question?
I'm asking this because, I mean, we're coming up on our budget season.
Well, we've already specked out the vehicle. The question is, is how long, once we place the order, does it take to get here, maybe?
Are you talking about build-out time?
Yeah, when will the rest of it be due? The rest of the money be...
Build-out time right now, because of COVID, is 12 to 13 months. What they told us is 250 working days, so 12 to 13 months build-out, once we order.
We go into our next budget season with the other, if we go into the next budget season to earmark the rest of it, it'll be ready, it'll be good to go when the truck is ready. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, so, uh...
You can't see what I'm saying because I have a mask on. But if I took my mask off, you'd know exactly what I was saying.
Yeah, so ultimately, the other half would not be due until next year, and we could have handled that during the budget session.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, if you read the letter, I was just updating him, letting him know that, hey, as of October, costs are going to go up for, you know, we talked about that, I think it was back in April, last time I talked to you guys about this, but the cost of steel and aluminum goes up. For whatever reason, October 1 is their fiscal year, and so the costs are going to go up again, which would completely wipe out the savings we would get by paying half down on the truck now. So, that's why I wanted to bring it to you.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I've got a few questions. Would you rather address questions at the next meeting when this resolution's formally done? Or do you want to try to answer a few tonight?
I mean, I'm, either way, it's fine.
All right, well, let me ask... Let's go tonight, and then if you can't answer them, it'll give them time to research.
Okay, okay. This truck we've currently got, it's engine number two, is that correct?
Correct.
And it's deteriorating rapidly. Now, is this a truck you would, you're definitely wanting to get rid of when this new truck comes in? Is that correct?
Well, in a perfect world, this was going to remain with us as a reserve truck because we're going to have, you know, eventually, at some point down the line, another station to put an apparatus in. So, the idea was to keep this for that purpose. But in order to keep this, we're going to have to sink some money and probably put a new engine in it in order to keep it.
Okay, so whether or not we get a new truck or not, it really doesn't matter if this thing's deteriorating. We're going to keep it anyway, are we going to pay for the expenses anyway? Is that correct?
Well, if this thing continues to deteriorate the way it is right now, I think the best course of action would be to get rid of it. But the original plan was to keep it.
If I could, I believe the normal route, when the, the way it works is, you'll have two engines, or three engines, two are frontline and one is reserve. So, typically, what would happen in a perfect world is this being the older new one would fade off into the reserve and become the reserve unit. And then the one that was in reserve would then be sold.
Would go away, yes.
But they're looking at, if possible and when possible, keeping that additional apparatus so if and when a new fire station was open and a new apparatus would be needed, they wouldn't have to go buy a new apparatus at that point. Did I, is that accurate, Chief?
Correct.
Are we getting the cart before the horse? Should we, are we, we're kind of like gearing up for another station without having made a decision?
No, 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 that's not what's happening at all. Right now, we need to replace this engine. The engine that needs to be replaced is actually the newer of the two old engines. The other one that's in reserve right now is serving as engine three. It's a 2006 model, but it is operating a whole lot better than this 2010 model is. So, a truck that's actually four years older is actually operating better than the 2010 model.
And when you put one in reserve, do you just drive it less? Does it only get started maybe once a week or something like that?
It gets started weekly and put through a series of tests. But if we have, for whatever reason, engine one or engine two needs to go for some kind of service and oil change or whatever, that truck becomes a frontline apparatus, so we never lose a step.
How many apparatus do we have in total? How many ladder trucks, engines and various...
We have one ladder truck, we have three engines right now, and then we have a squad that will take the place of a ladder in an emergency situation.
Now, that old, we had replaced the old ladder truck several years ago. Did that one get finally sold off, the old one?
Yeah, yeah, it did, and I think what, three years ago, two, three years ago?
The last time I, I guess, tuned in, we still had the old one, but supposedly the steering was suspect and all that, so I guess...
The electrical on that thing was a nightmare.
Okay, so that's gone then?
Yeah, it's gone.
That's out of here, all right. And how much would it cost to equip the new truck?
You're looking at $30,000 to $35,000 to equip a new truck, yeah.
I think that's all the questions I've got for tonight. I may have some more follow-up next time, but thank you very much.
Anybody else? Thank you. So, that was one of the reasons that we did ask, we, what I don't want to have happen, and I know because I've sat in the council chairs before, is money gets appropriated for an engine, and we thought, I thought at least, I can speak for myself, that that was going to be the end cost of the vehicle. It was the ladder truck. So, we got that vehicle in, and then there was a big price tag to equip the vehicle. So, we want to be as transparent as early as possible that that is coming, but we don't have it all specked out with all the safety features that would be tools and whatnot that would be there. The original anticipated price, that when we set aside 310, we assumed that the vehicle would cost $620,000. we, we assumed that the vehicle would cost 620,000. The vehicle is costing 602, which would be the 18 to get there, but it also looks like we're still not going to quite hit that 620 number if you include the apparatus and the equipment that goes on.
I would say I definitely appreciate your transparency on this.
Hang on, I want to make sure everyone heard that.
Okay. I wanted to say, I definitely appreciate your transparency on this because I remember about five years ago, we, we bought a, bought that big ladder truck, and then there was a huge price tag to outfit it, and we needed more firefighters and everything else. So it was a much bigger cost than we thought at the time, so thank you.
Thank you. I also want to point out that whether or not this vehicle is retained for a possible future expansion, I think I was talking to Chief, and there's a chance that we might keep the oldest truck as the truck in reserve and dispose of this one instead, because the anticipated cost of maintenance are exceeding where it needs to be at. You do have to keep the reserve vehicles maintained in case one of these things goes out. You don't want to have a bunch of firefighters showing up in their pickup truck to the location. All right. And again, Councilmembers Saunders and Vapurzam, I'm going to assume that if you have something to say, you're just going to shout out and say it, because I've neglected you guys. With that, we will move on to Mayor's comments. What we have, I wanted to point out a few things. The first of all will be that ACHI, the Arkansas Center for Health Improvement, has released local COVID-19 numbers that are fairly up to date-ish, at least when they released them. As of July 27, Monmeil had 165 cases cumulative and 36 active cases. It's been what, six days, almost a week now? I checked this afternoon to see if they had released more up to date information. They had not. So 165 cumulative cases may seem small, but let's also look at the active number represents a fairly sizable percentage of the total cumulative cases, right? And so if the active cases continues to rise, you can expect the cumulative cases to rise with them. As far as the COVID-19 changes that the city has, the biggest change, changes we're looking at were discussed by Ms. Vogler, and that is the Department of Senior Services. When we shut that building down and some of the others pursuant to state mandate, we, we focused on the fact that all of the recommendations are heavily on protecting highly vulnerable individuals. That's not individuals necessarily more susceptible, but it is individuals more likely to suffer serious, serious effects if they're diagnosed. However, we've been closed a number of months, and we've started to open up a few things. We have a demographic there that can really benefit from a lot of the services that can be provided, whether it's, I was going to bring out the list, but just classes that you go, oh, no, that is really important, we want that to go on, whether it's stress management classes or, or just yoga, when you, when you kind of stay inactive for an extended period of time, it can really affect how well you are able to rebound. So, and I wish Nicole was still here because she's done an excellent job as we're trying to find the right way to scale up to allow this demographic to be able to use the facilities in a way that we can do as, as healthy as possible. And I believe, yeah, so. Other than that, the other businesses continue pretty much as normal in COVID. And I'm happy to answer any questions, or this may be a good time to discuss whether or not we plan to continue this hybrid council meeting. I think it's gone fairly smoothly, but if you disagree, let me know. Any questions, comments, discussion on COVID-related issues? Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, sir. I noticed that my wife and I walk at the lake, we used to walk there almost once a day. It's more like twice a week now. We pick certain nights where there's fewer people out there. There's no signs anymore. Y'all used to have some signs recommending six feet and that sort of thing on the walking paths. I would appreciate it if, if, I think people think it's okay to do whatever again now because there's no signs, and it would be nice to have at least one sign out there that says something about state requirements or six feet or a mask, because there's a lot of people with no masks that jog and run right past folks and things like that, and they're huffing and puffing. So I'm hearing of a lot of people are saying they don't walk there anymore because they, they just.
I thought. Thank you, sir. We, I'm not sure why the signs came down. There was, I didn't give an order to, I'm not sure if they just came down through wear and tear and no one replaced them or whatnot, but we can get those put back out there. Also, Mayor's comments, filing deadline for the four positions is coming up to a close here pretty quick. So if you haven't filed and planned on it, better get to it. We received bids on Crystal Hill Road. We are in the process of trying to value engineer that project down. My goal this entire time is we, one big priority with that project was to reduce the cost of that project by scaling it from four lane to a two lane with a small median. What happened is that amount still is significantly, well, several hundred thousand dollars above the budget that we have. And so when I was talking to the engineers, I said, well, how in the, how in the world did that happen? That we ended up with a road that was supposed to be cheaper, that came above budget? And so I had the engineers run those same numbers for the quantity and the whole kit and caboodle for the four lane road, the original road that was designed. And just as we anticipated those, that amount came in about $800,000 higher. So the gap between, the, the amount of savings is the same that we anticipated. Just, I guess, since the time the project was, was, the bonds went out back in 2012, or the election back in 2012, and now, both of those have, have become more expensive, right? So we, we still think that we can value engineer it down a couple hundred thousand through changing a few things and be able to afford it with the current funds, is, is what it looks like. However, that means we're coming at that budget, that, that amount that we have in bonds for that project, not $800,000 less. But it does mean that if we would have put out to bid the old design right now, we, we would have been off by a million dollars, basically, so. Just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. Also, coming up here real quick, Odom North will be getting overlaid from Woodland to the Boulevard. That was a state aid street grant program. So the state will actually be handling that, and that'll be, that'll be nice. City Hall renovations are drawing to a close for Phase Two. By the end of this month, we should, we should all be in the building. There will be a period of time where we may have to close City Hall down for several days. That is old furniture coming out, new furniture coming in, people moving from one end of the building to the other end of the building, people coming from downstairs, upstairs. I'll try and let y'all know as we get those dates more certain. It looks like it's going to be the third week of August. And with that, after this meeting, if there's anyone that would like to take a quick tour of the back, I'd love to show you where we're at, but that's for another time. That concludes Mayor's comments, and we will move on to City Councilmembers' comments. Councilmember Scott?
I think we all received a letter from the fellow who lives on Masters Place about the loud party at the country club. And I thought that it was just a matter of kind of the, you know, the curfew time for music to go off. But this particular individual said that the music was offensive or just horrible or something like that, and he wanted the council to do something about it. So I don't know if we have a noise ordinance or if it's just a matter of speaking with the country club and asking them to, if, if there is anything we can do about that.
Well, there's, there's of course nothing we can do to go back and undo what occurred. I had no idea that they were going to be holding what had basically amounted to a concert in what basically amounts to residential neighborhood. I did send an email that night to the city attorney and chief of police, and we met today to, and we've had a few other noise ordinance related issues or noise complaints about that, we had plenty, but also in just other areas and how we were addressing it. And so the, the first thing is that we, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam City Attorney, but we don't have a set time limit where we now start enforcing the, the noise ordinance. The noise ordinance is in effect 24 hours a day, seven days a week. But it's written in such a way that talks about what would offend a reasonable person, so on and so forth. Something that may be perfectly appropriate at noon might not be perfectly appropriate at 3:00 a.m. And so I reiterated with the Chief Pickard that we, we're responding, we're going to start and continue responding to all noise complaints regardless of the time. But obviously, they're taking into account what's going on. We do have an exception, there's an exception to the, it's too loud, and that deals with a certain list of things such as noises made in the course of permitted projects, usual noises of house. And that talks about that exception applying during reasonable hours, which is where I think we've got this idea that the noise ordinance only applies outside of those hours. I believe the city attorney will be drafting an ordinance that maybe is a little more specific on a few different things, and maybe tries to address decibel levels as opposed to statements such as, you know, sound that because of its volume level, et cetera, disturbs, injures or endangers the comfort, health, peace, or safety of reasonable persons of ordinary sensibilities. Leaves a lot to, leaves a lot to argue. It is, so that, and we were, yeah. So it is certainly, I was out there Saturday night. I got there, by the time I got notifications and got out to the location, it was 11, 11:15-ish, and they were, there was literally, they were packing up the drums and the whole nine yards. I never heard it, but from what, from what social media would have me saying communications that we've received since then, it was apparently fairly loud. I'm not sure if y'all heard it.
No, I actually, I actually live very close to the 18th Green, and, and I heard it, and I thought, oh my, this is, somebody's probably going to complain. But it, it did not bother me. It was a Saturday night. If, if something like that was to go on at some time, I think Saturday night's the time to do it. And I don't know what the limitations are on time, but I, I personally sat out on the deck of my pool and listened to the music I thought was pretty good, so. I was not offended by it, but there's other people that have other tastes, so it probably is a decibel thing. And I would actually say that I have more problems with my neighbors with very, very loud blower devices and revving car engines on car restoration and things like that that bother me a heck of a lot more. So, thank you.
Thank you. Was that what you hit your button for?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilmember Williams?
I just have a quick question because I know, like at Fourth Best or these other festivals that we have in Lake Willistee, we'll have concerts, and it'll be very, very loud, and, you know, it goes on. I don't know if they have to have a permit to have those concerts, or would the country club have been required, would it have been better for them had they come to the city and asked permission to have an outdoor concert? I don't know how it actually goes down on different activities that we have in the park. It just seems like it would be the same.
Yeah, even Batsch on the Boulevard, but I don't know any of the, you're talking about a permit process.
Yeah.
I don't know that either, anything we've had at the Lake Willistee goes to 10:30 at night. Madam City Attorney?
Just a little bit on that, I did look at several other municipalities ordinances today, just for reference. And some of the ones that we're looking at, like in northwest Arkansas, a couple of those municipalities have a process for getting a variance from the mayor so that basically anytime you're going to have an event like that, you would just need to present your project to the mayor and let them look at your hours and that kind of thing.
But actually, the variance would have hours.
Right.
You know, permitted hours to have loud music.
I think we have had, at Willistee, we've had things go to 10 o'clock.
Yeah, we have, because, you know, we're right there, block off of it, and it has gone pretty late at times.
Yeah. I don't know that I would like to have been the person that approved that, though, so. But anyways. Is there any additional Councilmember comments? Seeing none, City Attorney's comments?
I don't have any comments.
That's a lot of work. City Clerk?
No comment.
We're going to have to sort this out. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Vapurzam, I believe, was first. Did I hear a second? All right, all those in favor, please speak into your microphone and say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.